We'll open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee meeting for Thursday, November 3rd. If we could stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of members.
Brittany Myers, student representative.
Steve Tringali, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Vernaco, Millville.
Joette Jarrett, Blackstone.
Jack Keef, student representative.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you very much, and we'll move to the report of student reps.
So, we actually have a lot going on the past few weeks. Yesterday, on Wednesday, we had the NHS-sponsored event, which was Soul Hope. And that is when you get a bunch of people together in the last night that we take old jeans and like milk jugs and they make shoes out of it. So, they cut them out and then they send them to Uganda. Everyone brings in money for pizza and just for it being able to be sent over. And they make them there in Uganda for people to have shoes. So, it's a really great event. It's very successful. Wasn't able to go last night, but I did go last year and it was a really great event. On Monday, on Halloween, we had the Senior Halloween. Students started coming in at 7:00 a.m. with breakfast, which was juice, hot chocolate. We had Dunkin's from, I mean, excuse me, donuts from Dunkin' Donuts. And we had bagels and cream cheese from Panera. The winners for Best Group, Scariest, Funniest, and Most Creative were Snapchat filters. Figures of Speech was most creative. They were puns. And then Scariest was a, just a really scary costume, I must say. I passed her in the hallway a couple times and I got a little spooked, so.
On Wednesday, the History Department had a mock election. So, I was 11-2 during our advisory period. The final results were that Donald Trump won with 56.5 percent of the vote to Hillary Clinton's 43.5 percent of the vote. After that, we have, we did bring you the scores or the standings of our athletics at the school. So, we'll start with cross-country, which is 1, 1, and 3 losses with no ties. JV field hockey has no wins and 8 losses with a single tie. Varsity field hockey is 9, 7, and 3. They're on to their second round of districts at NIPMUC, 2:30 on Friday. JV football is 3 and 3. The varsity football's 4 and 4. JV boys soccer is 1, 10, and 3. JV girls soccer is 7, 4, and 4. Varsity boys soccer is 6, 9, and 3. Varsity girls soccer is 7, 9, and 2. JV volleyball is 10 and 7, and varsity volleyball is 7 and 11. And for future reference, you can find all the team standings on dualvalleyconference.org, and all you have to do is click on Blackstone Millville.
So, marching band, as we were just discussing, had a very successful weekend, and hopefully we can just get better from there. We won Massachusetts State Championships and New England State Championships in Division 4 Open at the U.S. Bands Show on Saturday. And on Sunday, at a different circuit, which is New England Scholastic Band Association or NESBA, we won Division 4 Champions with a 98.4. And that is the highest score BMR has ever gotten in that competition. And also, on Sunday was the seniors' big day, so we got a little pins. Our parents pinned us with flowers and we got to go to awards, so that was really fun. Upcoming shows, we have a prelims show on Saturday, which we're very excited about. It's in Bridgeport, Connecticut. And then Nationals is in MetLife Stadium in New Jersey on November 12th.
That'll be it.
Okay. Any questions for the student reps?
So, was that finished again for the band? You said you're Massachusetts Champions and New England Champions?
Yep.
Tremendous.
Yeah.
Very good.
And it's actually the, it's been three years since you've won? Is that right?
For the state championships, we did win last year also, so.
That's U.S. Bands?
Yep.
And then NESBA was?
It's a different circuit.
Right.
So, NESBA's a different thing.
But that was a big win?
Yeah, definitely.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the updates on the sports.
No problem.
Although I feel like I was watching SportsCenter. I'm gonna have to rewind.
Not a minute of me taking it.
I couldn't even keep up. All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public forum. And Consent Agenda A, we have warrants, field trips. It looks like Millville Elementary has submitted their year's worth of field trips, so there are several in here. And the minutes for October 20th are also included in the Consent Agenda A. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve Consent Agenda A, or if someone wants to split them up, that's fine. Motion.
I'll make a motion to move Consent Agenda A.
Motion made by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I'm just abstaining from the minutes. Approve the warrants and field trips.
So, Wendy abstained from approving the minutes. And do we want to move School Committee until?
Till after.
Until it's here? Yeah. So, actually, if there's no objections, I'm gonna move our School Committee update, Subcommittee updates to after the report of the Superintendent or maybe after public forum. So, moving on, we have report of the Superintendent Attendant by Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. In your packet, you'll see personnel updates at AFM, JFK, Bianca Brandon Jones. She will be starting the 28th of November. She is our Adjustment Counselor. As you all know, Mr. Staples is retiring, and that will give us about a month of overlap for those two positions. Also, at AFM, we have hired a new 5th grade Special Ed teacher, and she will be starting right before Thanksgiving on the 21st of November. District-wide, we have secured a ECBA, which is a Board Certified Behavior Analyst for the district, and she'll be starting also on the 21st.
Where will she be housed?
She will be housed?
Complex.
At the complex. That's where most of that work right now is, but she'll be available elsewhere in the district as well. And at the middle school, we have hired the Special Ed teacher for that new program that we voted a short time ago, and that person actually started on the 17th of October, and that is David Civadino.
Thank you.
Okay. It's now my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Braverman and her intern, the lovely Haley Carroll, and they're gonna do a presentation on special education.
Good evening. So, our presentation is on the Special Education School Year of 2016, and Haley has been my intern for a few weeks now. She's doing a great job in the Office of Special Education. She is a junior at the high school, and she's hoping to major in Communications. She's been very, very helpful in the department.
So, our vision is that all students belong where a culture of a no-excuse spirit pervades the district's efforts to close the gaps in achievement for diverse learners.
What you will see is that our Special Ed enrollment currently is at 17.2 percent of our student body, which is aligned with what the state percentage is. Our Special Ed placement in full inclusion is 48.2 percent of our students, where the state is 61.9. So, you can see that's an area of which we need to target for improvement. The Progress in Performance Index, which is called the PPI, a PPI of 75 percent or higher indicates that the district is narrowing the achievement gap. Currently, we are at 63 percent. Where the state is at 51 percent. So, we're narrowing the gap, but when I looked over the course of the last four years, we've kind of plateaued. We're rather stagnant. So, that's another area in which we want to find some focus.
What was last year's?
Right around the same figure. It's been hovering. No statistical difference, really. So, our observations, our staff reports, and our IEP data is showing that most students are supported in a traditional pull-out learning model. That in-class support is being provided almost exclusively by paraeducators. And further data analysis shows that the PPI pattern has been consistent over time, and that the percentage of students supported in a full-inclusive environment is well below the state target. Achievement data shows a large gap in the performance of students with disabilities compared to all students.
For instructional supports for the school year of 2015, there was a BBST district-wide. There was Kid Talk at the middle school only. There was under use of 504, no use of DCAP, and special education. And for the school year of 2016, there is Kid Talk for 30 minutes each day among regular education and special education, individual parent meetings twice a week. Data sheets will be collected daily and monthly. Report completed by principal and given to the superintendent at leadership meetings, whereby the leadership team will analyze the data. There's RTI and MTSSP. There's the creation of the three-tier intervention flip charts. There's a DCAP, 504-related services only, and special education.
So, what we're looking to do is to have special educators and general educators have a designated time during their day, approximately 30 minutes after lunch, in which they'll be able to talk about kids who they may have a concern about. This allows the general education teacher to tap into the specialty of the special education teacher and collaborate on some interventions. We've put together a system where that conversation will happen three times a week, and twice a week, there's actually a slot available for parents to come in and talk with the teacher and the special educator, regardless if this is a special education student or not. So, it allows the parent and the general ed teacher to tap into the expertise of the general educator.
Can you, just for the public at home that don't know what BBST, 504, DCAP, all these acronyms, can you go through them?
Absolutely.
Just so that people understand what you're talking about?
Absolutely. So, each building has a building-based instructional support team. This is where we identify students who are struggling, may have some obstacles or barriers to accessing the curriculum, and it's referred to the team to look at types of interventions that can be imposed in the general education setting. Six, eight, maybe 12 weeks, data is collected, work samples are collected, different interventions are happening, and progress monitoring to see if what the barrier was can be corrected in the general education setting. If it cannot be simply addressed in the general education setting, what we can do is we can put together what's called a district accommodation plan, where we can put some accommodation plan proceedings together, which we offer for all students in a document. And a DCAP is not a legal document, but it is a promise. It is a promise to the parent that these are the types of interventions that we will use stringently in the classroom where we'll be collecting data. If the student seems to continue to struggle with the DCAP and we need to step it up more, we need to look to see if there is actually a disability. Now, some disabilities may require simply accommodations, and that would go on a 504 plan. A 504 plan is good for one year, and it puts in accommodations that will help that student. If it's deemed that the student requires specialized instruction, then it rises to the level of special education. So, by having a tiered system in place, what that does, it allows us to begin to put interventions in place where we may, in special ed, get a referral. We have 30 days to test, 45 days to meet. There isn't any intervention happening for 30 days, 45 days, and maybe longer, once we have an IEP signed. So, this is to be able to get the ball rolling, get the interventions in place. Maybe that student will still need to be referred to special ed, but at least we've begun to address the problem.
Just one more question. So, in 2015, we had a BBST district-wide, and so you're proposing a more of a Kid Talk model, three times a week?
Yes.
And two times a week in addition to that? That's open to parents to speak, and these are for non-special ed kids who fall in the area of needs improvement in one way, shape, or form?
One way, shape, or form.
So, you're going from the BBST model to a Kid Talk model?
We're going for, we're going to use the Kid Talk. The Kid Talk packet is addressed, there's a whole packet, which I think you had been able to review. That Kid Talk packet, if the student still is not successful, it will then go on to BBST. But the turnaround time for BBST should increase because we've already collected the data. And the BBST team then can decide, do we immediately go into a DCAP? Do we refer for 504 eligibility, or are we referring for special education?
So, you're saying this was done in the middle school only last year? The Kid Talks?
The Kid Talks.
Do you have any, any data showing us the pros and cons to it, or, you know, where it actually worked for any of the kids, or how it actually?
The Kid Talk model at the middle school was unique to the middle school. The Kid Talk model that I'm proposing, that we now do at the elementary level as well as the middle, and then, I don't think we'll call it Kid Talk at the high school, but we'll call it student-centered something, will look very different. So, what Justin did last year, as far as collecting data, bringing it to the leadership team, using that as a data team to analyze information, that wasn't done. And that's new to this model, where we'll be using our leadership teams to really look at what's coming out of those Kid Talk meetings. But I don't have that tonight for you.
So, and you're saying it's not a special ed-run meeting? It's the two coming together? But you're the one implementing it and overseeing it?
It's on the district improvement plan, and it's under leadership, which means that all of us principals and I, as well as Assistant Superintendent and the Superintendent, have made this a focus, a goal, and so it's something in which we are all participating in. I meet every Tuesday morning with Dr. Hawke, and I meet every Wednesday morning with the principals at the complex. And what we're doing is we're putting this Kid Talk together. We're using our Professional Development Day to tweak our data sheets. We have somebody coming in who's going to be helping us with that, and then we'll be exercising this in our next leadership meeting.
So, is the Kid Talk open for the general public? You said parent meetings. How will the parents find out about it? Will they approach you, or how does that start?
So, A, yes. A parent could call and say, I need to, I really want, I feel like my child is struggling in math. I'd really like to come in and spend some time and talk to my child's math teacher. But typically, those happen before school or after school. What we have found is that if a child is struggling in one area, odds are, they could be struggling in other areas. So, this allows the Kid Talk team to come together and actually address the parent, similar to how you would do in an IEP team, but this is just simply a general education model. So, the parent has two opportunities to come in. The parent can come in the first session or the second session, but that availability to come in before school or after school, depending on the parent's work schedule, and simply have a parent meeting is still open. That door's not closed. But this is to, this is to bring the parent voice into the problem solving, and also to share with the parent the interventions that we're doing, and perhaps have some carryover at home.
So, this has been going on already this school year?
This, this is just now being rolled out. We're using our PD to finalize our data sheets. I'm going into the faculty meetings next week, where we'll be presenting it to the faculty, the principals, along with myself. Dr. Thompson or Mr. Himmelberger may be joining me, where we'll be telling the faculty that this is the expectation. We're establishing this culture of no excuse. We want all students to learn, and that we want general educators and special educators coming together to discuss kids.
I know you said you're just putting it in place, but what information are you gonna track on the data sheets? What kind of assessments are you gonna be tracking?
Okay. So, in the Kid Talk packets, let's say you have a student who is struggling with reading comprehension. Under the reading comprehension block, list all the interventions that you could be doing in a general education classroom to help with reading comprehension. We'll be taking data on those interventions, progress monitoring. We'll be taking work samples. We'll be taking pre- and post-data. Before the interventions, during the interventions, when we faded the intervention and support, was the student able to maintain those skills? That's the kind of data that we want to look at. We'll also be looking at, out of the Kid Talks, how many actually don't need to end up at BBST? If the packet does end up at BBST, how many of those actually resulted in a DCAP? Which, as you can see, there's been none to very little use. Did we have to do a 504 eligibility, or was it actually referred to special ed? And if it was referred to special ed, was there a finding of requiring specialized instruction?
So, you, you said when you were going through this list that the DCAP is actually generalized as well?
Yes.
So, the chances of not, of it not being used at all versus maybe it was just not called that, you know?
No, I've had some pretty lengthy discussions throughout the summer. We started at these discussions around DCAP in our leadership retreat. This is an issue in this district.
Okay. So, it was identified?
It was identified, it was identified as a need, and this is something that the principals have been pretty vocal about. And again, it's not a legal document, but it's a promise to a parent. So, when a parent says, "My child is struggling," typically what they may hear in a special ed meeting is a finding of no eligibility.
And then?
The parent is still afraid, "My child is struggling." And so, now, we have a plan. And it doesn't all fall on the general educator. We have the special education teachers collaborating.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on that page?
So, that brings us to the co-teaching. And the co-teaching was rolled out last year, and there was a voluntary PD on the co-teaching. It happened over the summer. I think it was one of my first days here. Throughout the year, we assessed the co-teaching strengths, just to kind of get the word out. Why should I be a co-teacher? What is the strength in co-teaching? And what were the challenges? We did some observations. We did some teacher interviews. We also spoke to some paras. Over and over again, we heard that the largest barrier or concern for co-teaching in our district was the lack of the co-plan. But we're not unlike other districts. Depending at what level you're at, that common planning time continues to be an obstacle. So, in school, in the school year of 2016, that was something I needed to be mindful of if this was going to work. So, what I decided to do were frequent and consistent walkthroughs in the co-teaching classrooms throughout the district, providing systematic co-teaching feedback on the six co-teaching approaches. And in your packets this evening, you'll see the laminated guide, which illustrates Marilyn, Marilyn Fried's Six Styles of Co-teaching. So, when I go into a classroom to do an informal evaluation of co-teaching, last week, one teacher said, "Oh, I'm not doing co-teaching, Loretta." And I said, "You're not doing co-teaching?" And she said, "No. I pull a few kids to the side at the back of the room and I do my instruction." And I said, "For what subject?" And she told me. And I said, "That's wonderful. That's called alternative teaching, and you are using it for remediation and reteaching. That's exactly best practices. You are co-teaching." So, a lot of this is bringing the awareness and the education to the teachers so they can identify their model, they can identify which model you use at which time. We are bringing in Lisa Decker from Florida, who comes to this neck of the woods many times to talk to teachers about co-teaching and inclusive practices. And she, with all of the districts that she's been to, this lack of this common planning time continues to be an issue. So, one of the things that she suggests is she put together, Dr. Decker put together the Co-teaching Lesson Plan Book, and it's electronic. And so, when you look at the Lesson Plan Book, one side is to be filled out by the general education teacher, the other side is to be filled out by the special ed teacher. And what it does is it talks about what are the lesson activities, what are the big ideas or the goal, or the mastery question? What assessments will we be using? What's the data that we're collecting? So, it allows that, that common planning to happen, but simply not face-to-face the way traditional common planning has happened. So, it'll be electronic lesson planning.
How many, so how many co-teaching classrooms do we have in the district right now?
We have a co-teaching class at every grade, and we are hoping to continue to?
Every grade in every building?
Every grade.
So, the elementary schools?
Yes. And in Millville, and in Blackstone.
But, but based on what's in this packet, and based on the challenges that you've outlined, it says that in-class support is being provided exclusively by paras.
Yes.
But on this, it says special educator with the same license.
Yes, it does.
And it also says the role of a para-professional. So, I guess my concern is if you're going to go into a classroom and see if this is happening, then we need to roll it out right.
You're right.
So, I want to know how that's happening?
Okay.
To roll it out correctly. If, if we're gonna get this packet and see these six ideas, I want to make sure that if the, if you're identifying this as a challenge, how are we moving into doing it properly so that we can say that we're co-teaching effectively the way that it says in the packet that you gave us?
So, I went into an ELA co-teaching classroom two weeks ago. I saw an ELA teacher, I saw a special ed teacher, and I saw a para. I knew who the general educator was. She was standing at the front of the class. If I didn't know who the para was and who the special ed teacher was, I would've had a hard time differentiating, because both appeared to be supporting students in a traditional way that you would see a para supporting students, pointing, redirecting. But I didn't see the special educator doing the, any teaching, any specialized instruction. So, with my informal observations afterwards, I said, "Could we just take a few minutes to kind of debrief on how you think today's lesson went?" And this is not in Teach Point. This is not a formal process. This is not taking off the co-teaching strategies and taking a look at it. And what she did was she said, "I didn't realize that in this classroom, I could take those four students and do a pull aside." Now, in the other classroom, which was math, where the, and the other elementary actually was the comprehension, they didn't even realize that was co-teaching. So, what this is going to do is actually begin to give them the language and the models.
So, do we have a, I guess, special educator for each grade level, or do we still have the paras doing, you know, if you have two co-teaching, two co-teachers, one's a para in one room, and one's with the special ed, and then they swap? Is that how it's working still?
That is still how it's working, but I need to make the most effective use of the time when the special educator is in the room. I, I can't, I can't see still having the special educator, who has a unique skillset, simply pointing and redirecting. I need that teacher to be teaching. That's a lot of salary in that room.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but you said one of your challenges, I guess that's the only thing I'm getting at, is one of your challenges is we have a lot of paras that's doing the direct instruction. So, I guess that's, that's what I want to see different.
Yes.
And I'd like to see something different, so that we're moving from 2015 to 2016, where you have the special educator with co-teaching with the regular educator.
Right.
As it says in?
Exactly. And what I've said to Dr. Thompson in our informal conversations, the reason why we need to have Lisa Decker come in is because we have, and this isn't unique, but we have a little bit of a territorial issue going on. Who's the teacher? And the kids will tell you, the teacher is the general ed teacher. But the special educator should also be identified as the teacher. The special educator is not a glorified para. The special educator is not a glorified para. And that's commonly what's being viewed upon in the district. So I feel like we need to raise the expectations of our general educators to open up that ability to co-teach and share ownership. And at the same time, increase the skills of our special educators.
And she's coming in in April?
And she's coming in in April. So I feel like this is an opportunity to try it on, kind of role-play it, tweak it as we go along in the moment. The only time that she could be booked was in April. If we had been able to book her earlier on, we may have. But I think there is still a benefit of having her come in the spring, because I think people will come to it with a lot more of a robust conversation.
I just want to make sure, because usually the teachers have a choice of what they sign up for that day, how are we going to make sure that the rooms that you're identifying as co-teaching are benefiting from this one day that we have her?
And that's something I'll work out with Dr. Thompson when they go into Teach Point and they're allowed to sign up. I need the general educators and I need the special educators. But I don't just need the co-teaching pairs. In the afternoon, she's going to talk about inclusive practices. So that could be your health teacher. Your health teacher who has a student who has a reading disability. And the health teacher relies a lot on reading in the health class. How do you use inclusive practices? So there'll be an AM session and a PM session.
So now, we'd like to address the social-emotional sub-separate services. And for 2015, this was elementary programming and high school programming. And then in 2016, it's middle school programming. So that is small group instruction, behavior management, counseling, social skills groups, time management, study and organizational skills development, and occupational, physical, speech, and language therapies.
So this is the middle school programming that had been approved. I've spent time over at the middle school, working with the school psychologist, the school adjustment counselor, the teacher, the team chair, the principal. Because we're really building something from the ground up, it's unique in that it's not an elementary program. It's not a high school program. It really has to be developmentally appropriate for kids who have emotional challenges. So it'll provide the therapy piece. It'll provide the academic foundation. And we're looking at making it very engaging, at the same time aligning it with the mass curriculum framework. So we're really talking about a lot of project-based learning. The classroom is housed among three adjoining classrooms, where there is a classroom in the middle, a breakout session to the left, and a sensory room to the right. And again, staffed by the special education teacher and supported by a para educator, a school psychologist, and adjustment counselor. There'll also be monthly student-facilitated clinics. We run clinics throughout the district now for some of our sub-separate programs. But these will be available to parents so we can have some home-to-school carryover. Again, getting the families included in the conversations that we're having about students.
So this is very new for middle school.
Very new.
Do you know, it's not even been a month, correct? You just said October?
Yeah, 17.
Seventeen. How many students are we helping right now by implementing that?
Right now, we have five students identified. And we also, I have in some conversations about perhaps another student returning to our district.
So that's five, middle school, six through eight.
And just to fill the committee in, based on our conversation on Tuesday, the para that's in that room is a para that we've had who's trained in this, so it's not something that we've hired.
Right. We've only hired one person. All the people listed in there are people, except for the teacher, who are already previously in the district.
So there is a para in that room for...
Yes.
So there's currently five students in with the special educator.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so our first goal is to continue to refine and develop curriculum improvements to increase student achievement. And this means that we'll analyze schedule to create time for RTI. There's going to be PD in RTI and MTSS, and these are going to be implemented with integrity.
And I believe on this goal, this is a two-year goal, so as far as the action steps, we're still having conversations as to what that PD will look like. We do know that at the elementary level, there is a nice block where RTI is happening. We also know that it's happening at the middle school. So our goal number two is to improve the delivery of special education services. And that is to develop and publicize a district philosophy and the use of the inclusive settings. So each team meeting room, our print shop at the high school has created a poster that will be disseminated throughout all of the team meeting rooms, which talks about the benefits of inclusive practices and having kids in the inclusive classrooms. There's also an educator effective guidebook for inclusive practices. It talks about evidence-based practices for inclusion. And it uses the principles of universal design for learning, positive behavior supports, and social-emotional learning. And we'll implement through adopting the inclusive model during the IEP process. And as I did last year, I will be signing off on all the initial and three-year IEPs to track the implementation of the least restrictive environments. So when I get an initial, and I see immediately that we jumped into a pull-out model, I'm going to ask the team chair and the school psychologist to come to my office and explain what that rationale was. Because we always should be beginning with the least restrictive. So it's really kind of holding my hands on the reins. And it goes back to that chart that we showed you at the beginning, where we have our inclusive settings at 48.2, where the state average is 61. So I feel like I'm kind of the keeper of the keys here. I just really need to know, why are we jumping and putting kids down the hall for pull-outs? And my question to teachers have been, what do you think is happening down the hall that can't happen in your classroom? What kind of specialized instruction is happening where we can't have it happen in our co-teaching models? Why are kids being pulled out of these inclusive settings? So we're changing the culture. We're changing the expectations that we go immediately to a pull-out. Yes, there are kids who will require a pull-out, absolutely. But we should be very mindful when we decide to take a child out of a classroom with a highly qualified certified teacher, to go down the room below and slower, unless we really put more into our Tier III curriculums, which has been a priority of mine this year. And we'll talk about that.
Yeah, I'm just going to get on the bandwagon one more time. But I just think it's a great concept to do like a checklist model. We want to make sure that they're in a fully-inclusive classroom, but that fully-inclusive classroom, we need to make sure is working first. Because it's one thing to say, you know, it's least restrictive environment, and these kids perform at its best there. But that process needs to, I'm going to look forward in January to say, where do we get to in that process? Because to pull them out, I could see why they would be pulled out if we are not perfecting and tweaking that parent professional in that room, that special educator, and that co-teacher. If we're not perfecting that, but we have philosophized...
Philosophizing?
Yeah.
Philosophizing, yeah.
On this least instructive environment, then that's where my disconnect is right now. So that's what I'm hoping for come January, not really April. But how did we get from that inclusive classroom? What have we done differently so that we can back up that information?
Right.
Because I'm not seeing it yet. And I'm hoping to see it when we look at that district improvement plan.
I hope so too. And the elementary principals and I have discussed that when we go in to do these informal observations, that we'll go in together. So the general education teacher doesn't answer to me. So let's have the building principal be part of those informal conversations. So when we do see a general educator being territorial, or we see something that can be corrected, the principal can address it. So it won't be Loretta Braverman, Director of Special Ed, going in and imposing this. It's actually driven also by the building principal.
And to continue this, we are going to enhance and expand co-teaching models and provide protocols on the use of co-teaching methods in inclusion settings. We want to provide PD opportunities to enhance co-teaching, co-teacher-led faculty presentations, and PD by Lisa Decker. Maintain continuum of service delivery and vertical communication among team chairs to director at bi-weekly meetings to establish patterns and trends and needs for expanding services. We want to increase in Tier III curriculum.
And so what we did was we bulleted all of the curriculum in which we have invested in this year. So these are valuable resources that special ed teachers hadn't had to use in their specialized instruction. So it's like we have a lot of plates spinning in the air. There's a lot of things that are being done simultaneously. But I think based on what the principals and Dr. Thompson are going to share with you after my presentation, there's no time to lose. We're creating a sense of urgency. But these are the expectations, and these are the things that we need done.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
And we'll see you again in January.
Thank you.
You know, it's important. This is a process. It's not going to be an easy process. But the research is definitely out there, that students do considerably better if they are in the regular ed classroom. You know, we need to become inclusive in our practices. And, you know, it is going to be a process multifaceted. It's not going to be automatic, but, you know, right now, we have several, you know, we need to support teachers in making accommodations in the classroom. And we need to have specialized instruction when they are pulled out for support that is definitely specialized. And, you know, having students leave their peers and leave the general ed teacher is not going to present them with the opportunity to meet the standards and be able to have a competency determination. So it is heavy lifting, but I think we can do it. All right. So I need to ask our elementary principals to come up. And Jessie, do you want me to go up there and change this slideshow? Or, here he is, okay. And I think I'm going to ask Haley to do my PowerPoint, because she did a great job. I feel like mine's going to be a little inadequate. She's hired. We're keeping her around, besides the fact that I get to give her a hard time when she's sitting in our office area. All right. So, you know, as I mentioned last time, we are kind of on new territory. And I discussed that we have moved and tried out the PARC exam for the benefit of the public. The reason for that was to get a head start with a new medium, a new set of tests, a new set of questions, and get some measures to how our students are doing. You know, the bad, the good part of that is that I think our kids did pretty darn well, considering this is a much more difficult test, which I'll demonstrate and show you in just a second. The bad part, the negative part, is it is hard to go back and compare to last year's results. And will be hard next year, looking at MCAS 2.0, to make comparisons between three different tests. The one piece of news that I did get this morning at a meeting is that the department has, the DESE, has decided to push off for another year the first sophomore class that will have to pass MCAS 2.0 to get their high school diploma. And that will be this year's eighth grade, so that will be the first group that will have to pass the MCAS 2.0 to get their diploma, which actually gives them, you know, this year to get a little practice with that new format. Be interesting to see if that continues or if they push it off again. But right, it was going to be this year's freshmen that were going to have to pass that. And they've had just, you know, an eighth grade experience with that. So it gives us a little more time to look at the data, a little more time to work with what we are learning about the new tasks as we're rolling it out as we move forward. So that is some interesting news. So the first thing I wanted to point out, and I don't know where this has got... Nope, darn. Get it now. Oh, there we go. All right. I was looking to see if there was an infrared on this. Nope. Jessie, maybe I should stop pressing the buttons.
He's pushing buttons.
There we go. Stop pressing the buttons. Take that away from me. All right. So this is a chart directly from Bob Lee at the DESE. And he did this analysis for... Oh, there you go. All right, thanks. New toys. All right. Did this analysis. And what this shows us is this is looking at the statewide results for PARC and MCAS last year. Remember, we had about 50% of the districts in the Commonwealth use PARC, and about 50% use MCAS, the old MCAS, MCAS 1.0, if you will. And you can see, you know, you go by in English Language Arts, sorry, it only works for him. There we go. English Language Arts is in red. Blue is Mathematics. On the chart, you can see Grade III. And you can see, you know, except for Grade IV in ELA, every other comparison between the PARC and MCAS last year was a negative number. Grade IV was plus four in ELA, and zero difference in math between PARC and MCAS. But this basically tells us that this is a more difficult test. And I think that's important for parents to realize, not for a panic. I don't want people panicking about it. But it is a different type of test, and it is asking a different type of questioning and thinking and doing. And, you know, there will be some adjustment to that. Do I believe that our students will be able to do it and pass? Yes. But you can definitely see that difference, and it's definitely true that the PARC test is harder than the old MCAS test. And MCAS 2.0 will probably be somewhere in between. All right. So comparisons of PARC BMR versus the state. When you look at our results, you know, when you compare ourselves to the state, in math, you know, third grade, we were above the state by eight points. Fourth grade was down seven points. Fifth grade was even. Grade VI, and this is comparing our PARC results with the state PARC results. You know, grade VI, a little further down, negative 10. Seventh grade was plus six, and eighth grade was plus 19. Pretty good results. And keep in mind that in grades III, IV, V, that was a brand-new math program. So that's pretty impressive. Usually when you bring in a new program, you do see what we normally call the implementation dip. And I'm pretty impressed with those numbers for the first year of a program. And to see that we are, you know, for the most part, even or better when we're looking at the state's results in PARC, that's pretty impressive with math and a good starting point. In ELA, the news is better. Grade III was up 13. Grade IV was up four. Grade V was negative five. And again, that might be just, you know, the grade V test. You know, these are tests we've not seen before. Grade VI, plus two. Grade VII, plus one. And grade VIII was plus four, above the state average. Now, obviously, we want to consistently be much higher than the state average, but that's a good starting point. One longitudinal view that I have shown you for the past couple of years is a longitudinal graph of our graduating class of 2018, the current juniors who took the 10th grade tests last year. And if you look on the far right, you can see their fifth grade results. 12th is their sixth grade. 13 is their seventh grade. 2014 would be eighth grade. And then 2016 was their sophomore results. And you can see, much like in the past, you're seeing consistent improvement going up through so that our end product is pretty good.
So that was all MCAS, obviously?
That was all MCAS, yes. 2018... 2018, same thing. And you can see the progression as we move forward. It's always interesting to see, you know, 70% proficient and 78% in eighth, in eighth grade advanced, and then you get to, get to the sophomore test. And it's basically the same number, but it's split with more advanced. Some of those kids have moved up and you can see them moving up from, you know, needs improvement to advanced and lowering the number of failing or warning. Call failing as a sophomore, as a 10th grader, but warning everywhere else. So those are the district-wide results. And now we're going to talk about the elementary Park results, starting with Maloney School.
Good evening. So as you can see in front of you, it's a little hard to see, but I think that you have packets. We take a look at students who performed at the four and five levels, and we were looking at 62% for ELA. And when we break that apart, we're looking at level five at 7, a level four at 55. And then we're looking at level three, and that's really where...
Could you just explain what the levels mean?
Oh.
Because it is, I mean, MCAS was four levels.
You have it.
Park has five.
Park has five.
MCAS 2.0 will have four levels.
Yeah, Park has five, right.
Back again, so this is a one-year. No, don't memorize it. You want us to know it for the next...
So if you look, it's the very bottom of the present slide that's there. Level four and five means met or exceeded expectations. The scoring was more than likely between 750 and 850. A level five student who scored a level five on the Park would have been exceeded. And varies by grade. The expectation there probably in the area of seven, between 751 and 850. Level four, again, varying by grade, this would be a met expectation, 750 would be the range. Level three, approached expectation would be 725 to 749. Level two would be partially met expectations, 700 to 724, sorry. And level one, did not yet meet expectations, was 650 to 699. And each individual student received a report basically explaining, each family would have received a report explaining not only that, but a little bit more of a breakdown for the student in terms of the different areas and how that score was derived. Unfortunately, what it didn't provide, like MCAS in the past, is it didn't provide us with a lot of drill-down data to specific areas of concern. It just gave us a broad-based mathematics concept or a broad-based ELA component. It didn't give us that drill-down that we were looking for, and we had had an MCAS in the past.
Right. They call those areas subclaims. And so for the ELA portion, there's literary text. And on these reports that went home, it explains to parents what these mean. So it does break it down, but again, we didn't have access to any data that showed us for any, any individual student how they performed on each question. Did they not answer some questions? So unfortunately, we did not have access to any of that kind of data.
Or even, did they have enough time? Did they run out of time?
Exactly.
So we may have had students that did very well, but because they weren't moving as quick as the time allotted, they ran out of time and therefore the back half of the test maybe didn't get completed. Things like that are...
Or they would complete a rough draft and didn't have time to transfer their answers. And this was the first time that the test had been timed. In the past, MCAS, while they recommended a time, in reality, students had all the time that they needed to complete the assessment. So those are some pieces that we were just not able to answer because we don't have access to that. So, and we'll talk a little bit more in detail because what I did, what we did was we went back and we took a look at how many students were actually on the cusp within, within four points of moving over to the next level, because I thought that was really important information to take a look at. So we'll address that in a few more slides. We take a look at math. Again, the levels are the same. We break out, we had eight students performing at exceeded level five, 46% at met expectations, 28% approach, and 14 partially met, and four did not meet expectations. And that was with the new math program, so keep that in mind as well, within visions.
You want to move to the next slide? So for Millville, interestingly enough, our scores for level four and five in ELA came out to be 61 percentile. Seven was the average number for three, grades three, four, and five who participated in the test. At level five, 54% at level four, 25% at level three, 10 at level two, and four at level one. In math, scores very similar to what you see at AFM-Maloney, 55% for Millville. And levels four and five with 5% for a level five. Going right off the slide here. 50 was the percent for level four, 32 for level three, nine for level two, and four for level one. When we take the overall scaled scores, because these are scaled scores, the averages, believe it or not, came out very similar to AFM. 755 for Millville to 758 in ELA for AFM. Mathematics, Millville came in at 751, and it's 752 for AFM. So these numbers really kind of show the average reading and writing scaled scores. Again, same thing. AFM came in at 53 on ELA and literacy, and we came in, in Millville, at 52 in the reading. With writing, we both scored 36. So it's kind of a mirror of when it comes to all our students in the total population of student body, we really matched up very well in terms of our data and how we performed.
And I think that scaled score for the writing piece speaks volumes as to what we need to consider as we move forward, and we'll be addressing that in our improvement plan.
I can just interject before. I have to say that I'm, was blown away, these math scores were much higher than I expected them to be, based on the new program. You know, I think our work doing the scope and sequence of the curriculum, a lot of work by our teachers working with the new math program, and I think it's going to really pay off some huge, huge dividends. So it's very impressive.
The next slides for Millville here are detailed background reports. So for instance, when we look at this, level four, level four and five, again, that's the whole number of the percentile, coming in at 53 in grade three, grade four, 61 in grade five, 68. But the breakdown, if you look across the matrix, shows that grade three had some, had some work to do and had some struggles, yet we had a lot of our students coming in level four. So we did a lot of great things, but we didn't have a lot of students exceed. So when you look at the total number of all grades, three, four, five, completed here, you see the number seven. That kind of is a compilation of the whole assessment. The concern, so you know, here for Millville Elementary, the number that jumped off the page for me as the principal is the participation rate. Participation rates, we don't have a large school, so every time a student decides they're medical, or they're absent, or they're not participating in the assessment for any reason, that impacts us. We had 120 students enrolled and 117 take the test. Participation rate for all grades was 98%, but should that participation rate continue to drop, that places us at risk of falling to level two in the future. Being a level one building, it's something, you know, we take some pride in, and we really do, the whole faculty and staff really works hard. As you can see in grade four, everybody took the test. And it's a small class, that's this year's fifth grade. Grade five had two students who did not. So again, we're at risk with regard to a participation rate, and that's something that we're very cognizant of. These numbers, again, pretty much our scaled scores line up very well with AFM and show a nice picture for the district as a whole when it comes to detailed reports here in ELA and literacy. Same thing can be seen in math. I'm sorry. I think the next one's math. Yep, math. So same thing, you look at the participation rates, again, identical numbers. This time in the math area, we have students spread across the board, doing very well. Average for all students, 55 at level four and five. These numbers kind of speak for themselves. This is a lot of hard work on a lot of people's parts. Really impressed with how well they did in terms of their percentages.
Okay, yep. All right. So you'll see here that for levels four, five, we're looking at 62%.
Overall.
Overall. Level three, 24%. Level two, 11%. Level one, 4%. And earlier I had referenced students on the cusp, and we looked at it with about a four, four-point deficit, if you will, to the next level. And, you know, grade three, we had 1% who were away from scoring a level three. And we're looking, we're thinking that it was probably either one or two questions. Again, we're not quite sure of the value of the questions and how they're weighted, but we're also looking at 4% who were at a level three away from level four, five. And that was for grade three, three ELA. Grade four ELA, we were at 2% from a level two to a three, 5% from a level three to a four, five. So we're looking at a total of six students who are right, right there. Grade five ELA, 5% were at a level two from a level three, and 10%, which is a pretty significant number, were scored in a level three almost to a level four, five. So it's important to look at that. And again, I wish we could find that data so that we really knew specifically where those areas of challenge lie.
And if you look at grade three, they rocked it. They were at 73% level four and five, which reflects their coming in with a strong foundation. It would be, with all the work we're doing, if we continue, I would expect that trend to continue as they move up. They came in with, you know, we've been working so hard at the lower grade levels on building that literacy piece with the foundations and the Reader's Workshop and getting those systems in place. They're still going through the training K1, too. So that I think is worth really commending, of coming in so strong with that foundation. And you can now build on it. The frustration is we don't have enough information from Park. The pinpoint areas with MCAS where you could literally go down and fine-tune it because you knew which kind of questions were the challenges, you could know which areas we really needed to tweak. Park just broke it down, I think, into four areas and gave some descriptors, but it's so general even then, you know, in terms of how are we going to tackle it.
And then we move on to math. Again, you'll see grade three came in really strong. We're looking at overall 54% level four, five. Level three is 28%, level two, 14%, level one, 4%. And again, first year of the math program, so we did expect a dip. You know, it was challenging to get through the curriculum because last year not only was the program new to students, it was new to teachers. So they, it was a lot of collaboration and a lot of work to get this up and running. And I'm just, I'm really very pleased with how we did. And I really do have to share with you, when you walk into any classroom and there is math going on, there's math learning, the, I've noticed such a level, a deepened level of how students are able now to talk about their thinking and their reasoning. And I've just noticed a huge improvement, so I do expect that as we move, we'll see nothing but success. There is no program that exists that is the answer and does it all. We know that. So, and we will be talking about assessments that we're using besides the invisions, we are moving to stars. And that's going to also be helpful in identifying specific skills that we need to offer support. And again, I did run the percentages for the kiddos on the cusp, and in grade three, we had a total of 9% that were either very close to moving to a level three or a level four, five. I won't break it down for you unless you'd like me to. But the point is that we had a significant number of students who were right there. Overall, for math for grade four, I'm looking at a total of 14%. And then, so that's kind of a good news, bad news thing. They're right there. And for grade five, we're looking at a total of 12%. We're right on the cusp of level three or four, five.
It'll be interesting to see how your percentages match up to next year's.
It will.
You know, just to see.
It will.
If that, yeah, if we jumped over.
And one of the things that we're able to provide for teachers, I can show you an example, this is, it breaks it down, I'm talking ELA now, into these subclaims. And actually, it goes through every skill. And what's really beautiful about this document that we found is that it's really a vertical alignment, so you can see how one skill builds upon another as you move through the grade levels.
This is the Park?
Yeah. It's called the Reading and Writing Evidence Tables. Right. So we were able to go through, and we provided this to our teachers. So you're able to go through this and see exactly what they are focusing on at each grade level and how it connects to the next grade level, so that you have a better understanding of what those foundational skills are. So I think that this will be extremely helpful as well. It just really helps us to fine-tune and make sure that we are addressing what we need to address at each grade level.
For what it's worth, the Park descriptors that she just explained for K to two and then three through, grades three through 11, this is, it is going to provide vertical alignment for the district and something that we can utilize. But it really helped our faculty kind of go back and look at, when they looked at some of the descriptors, areas that we needed to work on in terms of the improvement plan for our Park results.
Exactly, right.
And what we need to do going forward. And there were some things that kind of jumped at us, and Carol had highlighted, I had highlighted, Versha had highlighted it for the elementary students right now, that was pretty important because it feeds, JFK feeds AFM. I mean, our K through two faculty feed our three, four, fives that are being assessed. So it's important for all of us on the elementary level to understand those descriptors and the areas of concern that kind of spoke to the faculty when they went in and looked at it. Our faculty also has the same descriptors. I made sure everybody had it. I didn't expect them to look at it and go tear it apart, but I did want them to have it as a reference document to utilize as the year goes on, especially if they see things going on with the kids in class, that they could go back and pull on. Grammar, punctuation, spelling, if those were areas of concern that kept continuing to show themselves, they had definitely ways to address it. And that was what was nice about those Park descriptors, it kind of spoke to some areas and things to think about with regard to standards-based education.
Right. And I would also add that, you know, we're always looking to find what is it that we need to do better. It's not about pushing kids harder, and it's not about moving faster. That's not what this is about. What it's about is being able to make adjustments to our instruction. What do we need to do differently to make sure that students understand and demonstrate growth? And it's about that progress monitoring. And what is so valuable is to be able to really hone in on those skills that are showing as deficits for our students. And so we need to address that through that targeted support, through the differentiated instruction and our RTI.
Read both sides. We'll go into this.
What's that?
Do you want me to go into this?
Sure.
Because I know, so I, unfortunately, last spring I was under the weather, not really great, but the students in grade five across AFM and MES took science. And one of the things we saw when we went in and looked at this, we could go into Park and pull down the different reports, and while it wasn't very detailed or expressive, with MCAS, they did take the MCAS science. So this is an MCAS science test. We were so hyper-focused on ELA and math that when we finally realized, oh my God, we've got to also present the science tonight... we've got to also present the science tonight, one of the things that came out in the data analysis that is pretty important is, as you can see in these numbers, whether it be thirteen to fourteen and fourteen to fifteen and sixteen, we've kind of become stagnant and flat-lined. The key here is, and this is clearly spoken during the next slide, we need to really get after our revision and realignment of science and the way we do science in our district. That's not a knock. It's just for us to improve and continuously improve, we need to realign ourselves to the new standards in science that have been rolled out across Commonwealth.
But this, this data is based on the previous standards anyway.
Yeah.
So it's not based on the upcoming ones that we need to refine. This is based on the...
Yep, good point. To where we need to go, though, the faculty is cognizant of the fact that we have to do some revision and some fine-tuning. It's clear. And, you know, the standards that are coming are just as important. So the kids have the knowledge and skills needed. They're looking to take it on, but as you can see, this is a pretty stagnant line.
Stagnant gets worse in thirteen to sixteen. If you, if you cut it in half of just advanced and proficient as a percentage and needs improvement and warning as a, in two thousand thirteen, it's sixty percent advanced and proficient, and it slowly goes down to fifty-one percent in two thousand sixteen. And I think that reflects what you said in terms of you are so hyper-vigilant on the others that this clearly suffered. And, you know, one thing I was trying to figure out over here is in the math longitudinal slide, I mean, there's severe dips in math in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I mean, it, they start out at seventy percent advanced and proficient, and they go from sixty-three to forty-eight to fifty-three, and then after two years of high school, they back up to sixty-nine, where they really should be at is in the eighties, you know.
Right, yeah. And part of that, and part of that is the expectation at middle school being algebraic thinking and not necessarily building it in the elementary school with the old program. So that's consistent with what you see most everywhere, but hopefully, you know, with our new programs, that will not be the case moving forward.
But back to the science, Bill, didn't you mention this for an eighth grade?
About three years ago.
In the last few years, it's been, so I think it's more, it's, it's just our curriculum.
Yeah, when my son was here, it wasn't, I mean, Paul's right, it wasn't a focus.
Right. And I'll also point out that, you know, and especially the eighth grade test is a accumulation of three different studies of science, science over three years. And, you know, part of it is, you know, we have a fifth grade test, we have an eighth grade test, and then we have a high school test, which we now basically, which is an end-of-course test, which students do very well on because they've studied one subject for one year and take a test, you know, in, you know, in middle school and even in fifth grade. It's everything covered from all, basically all of elementary in one test. And from one year to the next, you can see more life science or more physical science. It is not consistent, even with the amount of questions that are broken down by topic. So it's a consistent, I mean, it is concerning. And we definitely need, and one of the things with the next generation science standards is it's an integrated approach. And it's hands-on and it's inquiry. So that is, you know, a whole other monster, especially at the elementary level.
What I would say to that is, we're not alone.
Yeah.
You know, there are a lot of districts across Commonwealth, there are a lot of schools across Commonwealth right now doing the same exact exercise as us. So we're not anywhere we shouldn't be. Last year, we put a lot of time and energy into invisions and invisions trainings. We continued the literacy initiatives at the elementary level. And for three to five, those faculty members finished the literacy initiative with the trainers. So now it's about them kind of taking hold and driving that forward. But for science, we're like a lot of other people in the Commonwealth. And that came up at the principal's conference often today, for what that's worth.
But I can tell you, elementary science is a challenge because you have to build that strong foundation in literacy. And when you go to literacy coaches and consultants, they'll say you ought to spend two blocks teaching literacy. Then you go to the math consultant, they're going to say you're going to teach two blocks of math. So where do you do your science and social studies? It's kind of flip-flop. I was a fifth grade science teacher and starting around in April, I used to start circling back, going beyond my curriculum because like Dr. Thompson said, it captures everything. And we had children in my school coming in from five different elementary schools. So there was no, even though we're all the same district, it just, it was like a balancing act. And I would start spending a portion of my day in April just circling back, reviewing, because you might have covered an earth science topic on soil back in third grade. Who remembers that when it comes back at you in MCAS? And also, science, looking at the new standards, it's going to be a steep learning curve for all elementary schools because they're pushing, putting more emphasis on inquiry and that exploration and the way most elementary schools teach science is really through some exploration, but a lot more of through the reading. So just tuck that away. I mean, we're getting there, but it is a challenge anywhere you go in any elementary school because of the foundations we're trying to build for literacy and math. Then combine that with a new math program and a new literacy initiative. It's, those things are now going to be settled and we'll be able to focus in on science.
And we do have teams of teachers who have started looking at breaking down the new generation science standards. The middle school already has it scoped out, and now we're looking at resources and what we need to share and move. The elementary is just starting on a scope and sequence right now. They started the last PD day, and there are groups that will be continuing that work on Tuesday as well.
And I see you've identified it in your next slide.
Yep. So here's our...
So for future considerations for improvement, the first is pretty much continuation of what we talked about last time we were together in the spring, which is, you know, really the need to emphasize our reading specialists and our literacy coaching. You know, to improve in literacy, not just the reading components, but the writing as well, we really need somebody who can go in and reinforce and support the faculty. Faculty control their curriculum, their instruction, and their assessment. They're the teachers. But our specialists are there for a reason and can help bring a great deal of resource to the table. And we, the way we're set up right now, it's run like a special in our elementaries. And we would like that, especially moving forward into this budget cycle, emphasize the need for literacy coaching and to carry our literacy initiative forward. Tim and Claire aren't going to be here next year. They're not going to be with us anymore. They've done some really nice things, but to carry that forward and have that in the hands of the teachers, it really is incumbent upon us to, you know, give them a tool that makes sense and a resource that makes sense. So that's where number one comes from. Number two, the writing programs, we recommend looking at investigating writing programs for K through five and kind of tying that in, again, as part of that literacy component, revising in alignment to the new science standards we talked about, and enhancing the tier-two interventions, especially in the area of literacy. Whether it be a Wilson Tier Two Just Words program or some other component, we'd like to continue to enhance our tier-two interventions. And some of what Mrs. Braverman mentioned earlier is a focus for us as a team, especially at the elementary level right now. Do you want to take the next one? I'm going to keep going. It's up to you.
Oh, I'll go.
Okay.
So what we actually did was toward the end of last year, we took a look at the assessments that we are working with, and we actually created a timeline because we were, we were, there was a lot of discussion, for example, for reading. Do we, we use the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment for reading? And should we assess at the beginning of the year, when the children had been, had been assessed just the year prior, you know, in, in May and June? Do we take that significant amount of time to assess again in September and October, which really impacts us getting going on our teaching? So we had a lot of conversation and a lot of discussion. And what we've, we provided a timeline. And obviously, it's certainly up to teacher discretion. When you see that you have some concerns about a student, you certainly need, you can assess to progress monitor. So we took a hard look at the data that we have, creating baselines, because if we don't use data to inform instruction, what good is it? We can collect all of the data that we want and we can be very data-rich, but if we don't use it, it's really useless. So we thought it really important to focus on the assessment piece. The progress monitoring and differentiation of instruction, you know, we do have RTI blocks that are built into our schedule. But again, we can say that we have RTI, but are we doing it and is it effective? So it's one thing to put it in your schedule, but it's quite another to use it so that you can meet the needs of students. So we do need to move forward and continue to fine-tune that. But I will, I will tell you that when I look at where we were just a couple of years ago and where we are now with that intervention piece, we've made progress. Again, that, that level-two intervention piece is a real challenge for us. And again, that concluding end-of-year activity there, all, all students will be assessed at the end of the year to provide that baseline data for the following year.
Question.
More of a comment. I know what you're saying about lots of new things in science and, you know, all that. I know a lot of districts are doing it. In my district, for example, we are departmentalizing at the elementary level. We have, reading and writing are taught by one teacher and their partner teacher teaches math and science. And then we can really focus on it, what you're saying. Because I think it's, it's just a lot to swallow at one time. So that might be something we might want to kick around, just think about doing that. Particularly if you only have like two-person teams. One's the grade three reading and writing teacher and the other's the math and science teacher. And because that's how you're going to have to teach it going forward, personally, what you said, you're going to have to integrate those things together. You don't have a separate science times. You really don't. And the same thing with writing, you have a separate writing time, you're going to have to integrate it. You might want to consider kind of blending those together, if you can do that.
We do that, too.
A couple pieces to the writing piece you raised. Writing across the curriculum is essential. So regardless of what content we're discussing, it's important that the kids continue to write and work in the area of writing. The faculty's hungry for that. And I'll, I'll speak for the building, just that piece in terms of, in our conversation, we know that's where we need to go. We know that's where we need to go at the elementary level and what we need to be doing. The other component that came up in some of the data analysis and in our breakdowns with faculty was the need for foundations for the grades three through five. K to two had received a great amount of work and a lot of time and investment and energy, but we never finished that for grades three through five. And in fairness to them, I bring that forward to you not as a criticism, but more as something to be aware of because it's something that they're very hungry for and are asking for moving forward. They know we're not, you know, affluent and have tons of money. They know it's about priorities and choices. They get it. But they're also very honest about if we want to improve, we've got to kind of hyper-focus in these key areas. I hope that kind of speaks to some of what you're saying, Mr. Trungali.
Yeah, just real quick, we are looking at, we'll be looking at writing programs this year, hoping to implement next year. But again, like Dr. Ha he said, it's choices and resources. I knew specifically we could not start a writing program this year with our lack of resources, so we put it off. But that is a need, you know, new science, new materials for the new science program is a need. Technology is, I mean, you know, I jokingly say, all of these are very fixable. All we need is time and money. So once we get those two things, we have a great staff here, great leadership. But unfortunately, we are kind of picking priorities. But writing is definitely something that needs to be brought in. There are a couple of writing programs that I'm looking at. We will do that investigation this year and make a recommendation moving forward.
I also think it's important to not overload, too.
Right.
Especially as an elementary teacher myself and teaching all of the subjects. If you were to throw at me a new science program, a new writing program, a new, a new report card, it would, it would be met with some...
Right.
It would be, it would be, you know, do you want to do one thing very well or do you want to do a bunch to say we did a bunch? So I think it's important to, when we do prioritize, that we, we think about those things and say, you know, are we, are we overloading? Because, you know, that is a budgetary thing in deciding on what, what is important at the moment.
Right.
Or roll out slowly because I caution, I do worry that if we roll out too many things at once, that, you know, it's, it's very difficult to do a good job.
It's hard to be patient.
It's hard to...
It's really hard to be patient.
Right. And there's, you know, there's a whole lot of expectations, you know, 21st century skills of communication that is still primarily writing. You know, we need technology, you know, math and science is the economy of Massachusetts. You know, it's biotech, it's, it's engineering, you know. So, you know, we need to prepare our kids for that. So it's, it's patience and vigilance and trying to, you know, but we have been cognizant of, I mean, you know, new math program, completing a literacy piece, you know, mapping curriculum is, there's a lot to do. People are working hard. I think we see some decent results, especially in the math. I was very impressed with, with those math results for the first year of the program. Rolling out a new math program here at the middle school. So there's a lot going on, but it's good work, it's hard work, and we need to be patient and persistent.
And the point, but the point raised about initiative fatigue, that was, that was a big conversation, not only we've had, but we've had with our faculty as well.
I think it's important to read.
And you're right on, you're right on top. Yeah, that's, they, they have the same concern.
Right. Which is, you know, part of why we did not bring in a writing program this year. Part of it is resources, part of it is three through five, taking a quick, quick breath.
I have one more question, Mrs. Brown. You mentioned Stars as a new assessment. It must be on the cusp of the kids' first run-through of that, or have they done it already in elementary?
Most teachers have completed the first assessment piece. Our next step is to invite Lauren and Gwen, who are the Title I, not sure of their title, teachers, parents here at the middle school.
But they're both, they're both...
Well-versed.
Former, former teachers.
Former teachers and very well-versed in this assessment. They're going to be coming down to the complex and also to Millville to meet with teachers to talk about what the data looks like and how do you read it? And even, even going into Stars and what can you pull from that? And then how do you react to it? So that's where we're at right now.
Are they doing quarterly in elementary or semester?
Semesters.
I think we had tried, talked about trimesters kind of going along with our report cards and that sort of thing. And just to go back to Gwen and...
Lauren.
Lauren, thank you. I always forget one, I could do one and not both. Forgive me. But they were instrumental in implementing here. And out of Title II-A, which is our professional development funds from the federal government, I have contracted them for a certain number of hours to help the rest of the district get up to speed with Stars. So again, building capacity in the organization, using the talents of those people once we had there to help the rest get on board. But, and the other bit of news is I am working with Renaissance Learning, who does Stars, about hosting a conference here in January, which will be good because we won't have to send people away. We can have them come right here. So we're looking at a date in January for that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea with the Stars because I'm just considering we're going from MCAS to PARC to MCAS two-point-O.
Right.
So what data do you look at and when and how and why? So, yeah, Stars, some more of a through line and makes a heck of a lot more sense because you could just get dizzy looking at all these things.
But, but one thing I'll point out here, and it is, you know, because I was talking with some colleagues today, people who have used Pearson products and Pearson assessments. PARC is basically run by Pearson. MCAS two-point-O, the subcontractor is measured progress, but the subcontractor is Pearson. So I would be interested to know, out of those grades who did better, who used the Pearson assessments and how much? I wonder if that could be. Because it is, getting used to the format and the questionings, and that's part of why we wanted to jump into PARC when we did it, was to have still children have that experience. You know, and again, you know, it, it does matter at each grade level because it tells us how our kids are doing. And don't get me wrong when I say this, but it is really, really important in 10th grade. We want to make sure that all of these kids have those experiences so they can pass that the first time through.
Our invision is Pearson, too, right?
Invisions is, vision is Pearson. So I would be curious, looking back at those math scores, you know, which grades really use some of those assessments, encouraging others to use those. And, you know, Stars is maybe not the same company, but again, the more experience they have using these sorts of assessments, getting used to the medium will help in the long run because, you know, our students are going to be taking these tests online. That is a big push.
I will tell you that the new digital enhancement assessments for... I will tell you that the new digital enhancement assessments for Envisions...
Yes.
...are phenomenal and they mimic all of the PARK questions.
Right. And even how you navigate them with the dropdown menus and the whole bit.
If it weren't for the student growth percentiles and helping us to convert the PARK to the MCAS and what the comparison looked like, this data would have been much more difficult. So looking at it, because it's scaled, we had to kind of look at that and say, what's this going to look like? Going forward, it's going to be another jump, like you said, Mr. Trungali. That's all. Something we're very well aware of and something we just have to keep working on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just real quick, the, you know, we did do a good overview of what the future considerations are, but there is a very detailed plan in your packet for dealing with the MCAS as well. But that's probably a little much. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Brown if she would just give us a quick update on revamping our elementary report cards. If you will recall, we did discuss earlier that our current report cards reflect the old standards, not the new standards, the 2011 standards. So we need to do some adjustments with that, and there is a large group of teachers involved with that revision. So can you kind of give us an update?
Sure. I'm working from memory here. So we actually began about mid-year last year, meeting and talking about report cards and looking at formats. We looked at report cards from surrounding communities. And the report card committee decided upon a format, and then their charge was to go back to their grade levels and take a look at ELA and math, which they did. And they've submitted suggestions. So we are looking at those. We're going to go back, or they're going to go back per grade level and have a final conversation for that. We were originally, I think, a little bit on the fast track for this because we know that it's needed. We know that we need to make revisions. But the more that we started talking about the report cards, we realized that this has to be a very thoughtful process. And teachers really need to play a big role in developing this and understanding it. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be providing them opportunities to meet, to take a look at the social competency piece, discuss, further discuss the ELA and math piece. We will also take time this year to look at science, because we thought that while we were working on the report cards, rather than piecemeal it, we'd be thoughtful about it and do science, because we know that those standards are changing. And then the plan will be by, depending upon the timeline, I'm going to say maybe April or May, we will be presenting this and then submitting the changes to Aspen to have all of those inputted. And I'm not quite sure of what that involves yet. I think that we're looking into that. And then we also talked about, it is absolutely vital for us to have very detailed and in-depth conversations with teachers about this report card, so that we have a very solid understanding of how we're assessing our students and how we're recording out their progress. And then also providing the opportunity for parent workshops, because parents, we need to be able to communicate this information to parents. So that in general is our timeline. So we're hopeful that we will be able to rule that out next year. So that's the plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So slowing down to do it well.
Absolutely.
Rubrics, assessments.
Rubrics, assessments. We're going to be taking a look at that, yeah.
And, you know, parent workshops and teachers really having a firm grasp as to what are these levels and what evidence leads us to, you know, assess those.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And then Dr. Hahe is available to present his improvement plan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This year's school council has a few members on it. We have Mrs. Linda Morrow, Mrs. Martufi, Caitlin Martufi, who just had a baby boy, myself, Mr. Joseph Frazier, Mrs. Mary Beth Haynes, Mr. Benjamin Burgess, and any other community members that are interested also are open to attend. We have a very formalized agenda. In our opening meeting this past month, we introduced the school council members, reorganized the school council, and put in reorg, so to speak, for chair, vice chair, and secretary. We did go over the district improvement plan. Last year, this plan that you're looking at was submitted in June and turned over to the superintendent's office with all signatures. So the signed copies are in central office for your reference as well. Mission isn't any different than it's been. Lines right up with all the work from the strategic plan and strategic planning committee work earlier, a couple of years ago, a few years ago. School and community working together. Vision statement, again, remains the same. We are revising our guiding principles, which is something important. Last year, we upheld the mantra of respect, responsibility, cooperation, and effort as underpinnings for our students and our school, everyone in our school. We created a mascot. So as you look at the fourth page in the packet, you'll see the mascot and the revision that was made from last year to this year. This year, we have respect, responsibility, and ready-to-learn, is what is expected of all our students, faculty, and staff. In terms of goal one, climate and learning environment core value, the goal is to create a positive classroom and school environment. We hold our school improvement teams. There'll be about six of them this year, give or take. About one a month in the fall, October, November, December will be off. And then we'll get back at it and have meetings in January, February, April, actually not April, I apologize, March, and May. Provided we need another one, we can also put it in in June. But as you look here in goal one, it's all straight ahead and clearly delineated for you. Positive contributions by school members will be recognized. These are all the action plan and steps that are taken. We will continue to revise and keep the focus of this plan on keeping a positive school climate moving forward in goal one. Goal two is around academic standards and expectations. Students will learn the foundation, math concepts and skills, demonstrate mastery of math concepts. Here in this goal, students in grades K through five will learn and apply mathematical concepts as applied in the Common Core standards. Our main tool in doing that is obviously Envisions. We've seen tremendous gains from last year to this year, not only amongst the students, but amongst the faculty and staff. People are much more comfortable with the program. They move at speed. And last year, they were not as quick with some of the topics or lessons, and this year they're just moving at high rates, and the kids are having a lot of fun with the program. So that's goal two. Goal three, students in K through five will learn and apply early reading and writing strategies as identified in Common Core standards. As we mentioned earlier, here, we are going to be continuing the curriculum mapping work, implementing the assessments. Our faculty tomorrow will turn over all assessments for baseline. So all our initial assessments for Open will be in for STARS, Funtis and Pennell. And for K and I, who don't have STARS, they're going to have their own homemade, kind of original assessments that they created for themselves that line up to the standards and the core, just so you have that information.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Absolutely, yeah.
You said they were going to make theirs up. Is that going to be aligned across the elementaries?
Yeah, we did. We did that exact exercise.
Not just one classroom, but it's a benchmark for the entire district?
No, so, and really, this was being done well. I wasn't even here, so it was wonderful that I came back and found out they'd already done the work.
Kindergarten teachers got together and they looked at the Common Core standards, and then they looked at assessments, and they created a Common Core-aligned assessment, pre and post-test for ELA and math. So that, and they kept in mind that because you have to do it individually with little kindergartners, so it's user-friendly. All of them are on board with it. All of them have implemented it. With grade one math, there is no pre and post-test with Envision, so they are using the post-test as their pre-test and then giving the assessment, because you need the similarity to make comparisons, to really measure, have we made progress? And then in between, we're using Funtis and Pennell. So they do have Funtis and Pennell.
In the F and P, correct.
Where is that information in here for the, that information for the evaluation? And I don't know.
Again, this was submitted in June, so we finalized this over the summer.
Oh.
So this plan was submitted over the summer. The only major edit that I made prior to submission was changing out SRI and SMI as our data tools to STARS. The faculty and staff are very cognizant of the fact that they want to continue their work in RTI, something that's been ongoing. So we continue that work as well, but that's something we should do just as part of best practice. So it's not included here either. But when you look at evaluations, instead of SRI and SMI, which would have been in there last year, you're looking and seeing STARS right now. That's the only major change that on that component was made to reflect what we're currently doing right here, right now. In June, all the council members had signed off and turned this over, so that kind of is one of the reasons you're not going to see some things. And you will see, and hopefully, the revisions as we go forward as a council. That kind of helps.
We could probably bring that back.
Yeah.
Bring that assessment back. When you guys come back to do it. And JF Caitlin.
Goal four is really around teaching and professional development. And a lot of the things that we kind of picked up on here in goal four, were around finishing up SEI, the sheltered English immersion strategies, which everyone is expected to do, picking up the guidebook for inclusive practices and the inclusion work that Desi has put forward for faculty and staff as well. We know that our faculty cannot continue on with their licensures without the coursework necessary. For them to get the next level of license or relicence, they're going to need hours in SEI, and they're going to need it in inclusive practices. So that's kind of reflected in terms of what you're looking at right here. That kind of spells out the four goals that we highlighted and wanted to work on. No, the elementary schools.
Any questions for Dr. Mark?
Water safety sampling update. Last Friday, we received a notice from the state. We did partake in the voluntary water testing from the state in lead and copper. We got the results back late Friday afternoon and discovered that we had, out of 281 fixtures, and again, fixtures covers everything from sinks in the bathroom to fill spots in the kitchen to water fountains, that we had 25 questionable fixtures in our schools in Blackstone. All of those 25 are what we would consider lightly-used water sources. For instance, there is a mixer fill here at the middle school with the new nutritional guidelines. We don't use the mixer to make cakes anymore, thus we don't use the fill very often, so water has sat in that fixture. When water sits in a fixture, it absorbs copper from the pipes, leads from the solder in the fixtures, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which can give kind of skewed results. I think it's important to note that these results were not going to become public until November 9th. We wanted to be very transparent and very proactive. We moved on this right away. A letter went home to parents on Monday, the 31st via email. Hopefully, everyone saw that. I know it was Halloween. But just so you know, those 25 fixtures have been shut down. And, you know, we are going to eventually retest them in the next coming weeks. It is at our cost. It will cost us about $500 to do that. And in between, we are regularly flushing those fixtures to try to get that stagnant water out of there. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that, make sure that you know that our, we were being proactive. We, they were, as of Monday, every one of those 25 was shut down and labeled, and that we're going to move forward to make sure that we can clear it. This is not a Blackstone water issue. The Blackstone water source is fine, does not have these problems. It is simply water sitting in fixtures and the water not running through. So, you know, something to be concerned about. You have actionable levels, which means we need to do something. They are not overly toxic levels. There's a couple of fixtures that have been sitting for a long period of time, seemingly, and those numbers are much higher. But for the most part, most of those 25, I think maybe 21 out of the 25, were just barely or just at that actionable level. So I just wanted to share that with the public and make sure everybody was aware of that.
And this testing came about from the state? This was not...
Yeah, this was, this was the state reacting to the Flint water crisis and making sure that, you know, we had safe water. And again, these are actionable levels. There's a couple. I believe that the actual water reports were emailed home as well. And again, in the spirit of full disclosure, you know, those are out there. And we did receive some phone calls and the leadership team, and Mrs. Cobb has dealt with those. Mrs. Cobb has contacted our water person who works with us in Millville, discussing next steps and such, and we do have a plan together for that moving forward.
Okay.
Okay. Just, you know, Millville was not tested because we're constantly monitoring Millville's water, so it's not, was not an initial concern there.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on, we're going backwards. We're waiting for Bill. Going back to school committee, subcommittee updates. We can postpone it, we can put it on the next agenda.
You said you wanted to talk about regionalizing.
You said you're going to have a presentation. All right. So we will post that on the agenda for the 17th, for subcommittee updates, or does anyone else want to add?
I do have, I started a draft of, I revised the letter from October 2014 when we first started the regional agreement amendment. So I kind of revised that. I had sent it just to committee members here, just to see if anyone had anything to add to it. But looking at the calendar, it looks like December 8th might be a good date to invite the public in, to start the conversations again. I think it probably makes sense to start with elementary parents and younger, and then open it to more once we have an initial list of topics. I don't know if anyone has any input on...
So we need to get this, we need to post this as a, if there's more than three of us, we need to post it as a workshop?
Okay.
So we'll need to get, check the dates. You could probably check with Bridgette.
Yep.
And then if it's clear, probably have her post it.
Okay.
And just let her know we would like her to post it. And then I think once that's officially posted, it can be social media sent out and...
Okay.
I think that would be the best plan. And just outline the idea for that meeting, the purpose for that meeting.
Right. Yep. It had like the initial, pretty much the same questions that the last one started with. I added a few bullets under it, but I think, I mean, people who want to join it should be the ones who have the most concerns, hopefully, and we can answer them.
So keep us posted if that's open. And then if it is open, post the date and go with it.
Perfect.
Great, thanks.
And I welcome anyone to join me. Make it three or more.
All right. And moving on to school committee forum. Bill, do you have anything?
Sure. I always have something for that. Couple of shout-outs. BMR volleyball, had a big win against Douglas on the homecoming day. You know, Vanessa Norman is the coach there, and they had a great way to date. They have them there in first of the year. It was great to see. I'm going to screw up this name, I'm going to be killed when I get home, but Mrs. Carpenter's class, second grade class in Millville, is that? Yeah. Carpenter's class, second grade class, and Mr. Boss, third grade class, have been doing an awesome job emphasizing kindness, and they developed a rock garden out there, so, you know, they need to get some props for that. And then last shout-out, I don't know if people saw, but Mr. Judek and Barsha, I believe, did a co-mingling of seniors and the class of 2029, which are our kindergarteners, and went and presented them with shirts, BMR shirts. our kindergartners, and went and presented them with shirts, BMR shirts, this is the class of 2029, and, you know, kind of had a thing where they'd wear them each first day, as they grow into them, they were huge, there's no way, every kindergarten could get into one of those.
I saw a parent wearing.
What?
I saw a parent wearing.
Of course they were.
One, I remember, it was a school function, but they had, it was, I'm like, that's totally their kids.
It was, it's a great idea, it's a great connection, it's a great community, I mean, they're right down the street from one another, so hopefully there's more of that throughout the year, so, other than that, just getting people to vote, no one, question two, and moving forward, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Georgia?
I would just hope to see everybody at the bonfire Monday night, and then.
It's 5 to 7, is it?
5:30 to 7:30. That's it.
It'll be dock at 4, so you know, it's a start from there.
Steve?
Guys stole my thunder, I was thinking about the bonfire as well, I know that got moved around, now people lost track of it, but, election day, no one, too, and good luck to the BMR band down at MetLife Stadium, I know they brought it home last year, we'll see what they can do this year, good luck to them.
And kind of as off Bill with the students going to different schools, 8th grade here went down to JFK, and it was first grade, right?
Yep.
They taught Spanish to some of the first graders, and it seemed like they, you know, mutually enjoyed it, I do have some edits or changes I'd like to see on our website under the school committee page, excuse me, the budget is not posted, so I'd like to see our new budget added to the landing page for that portion, as well as all the regional agreement stuff from the May vote, I think if we can just move it to another folder, maybe under all the minutes, I think the data is still important for people if they want to look back and see.
More of a file.
But file it away, it shouldn't be on our main page, it's a little confusing, leave the true regional agreement, dated 10/31/14, which is the actual agreement, but everything else, isn't, it's not labeled amendment stuff, so it, it looks like it's very confusing, and then another one I had asked to be worked on, and I know Cyrus left, so it's been just, and he was, you know, swamped initially, if we can add departments or titles besides teachers' names on the contact us page, it's just kind of hard to find, if you don't know exactly who you're looking for, you can't really search for people, and, oh yeah, is there a way to put, like the year-to-date budget at the September, I don't even know what meeting it was, this report is dated September 30th, kind of showing our budgeted versus our expended, expended to date, I think just it'd be nice, I think the public might understand better what our budget looks like.
We usually produce that quarterly, that's the first quarter.
Okay.
But we could make a link, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, can we just add it to that, you know, budget.
Just an expenditure.
You know, quarter one, just so people see, you know, like where our money is going.
Yeah, and it's requested sometimes as a public document, so it would be very easy to direct them, where, right now, we're saying it's in a packet.
Right, and this is already in, on, online posted in the packet.
That one is.
To find it, but this, if we just kind of link it direct, I think.
It is a good idea, it doesn't matter though.
Yes, the next one, the next one will be the end of the summer, it will be reported to you folks out in, beginning of the first meeting in January, I believe.
Good, good ideas, thank you, anything else, Tara?
No, that was it.
And I definitely want to give a shout-out to the band for this Saturday and next Saturday, and definitely wish them safe travels, unbelievable performances, so whether they are first place or not, I mean, they've definitely put their time in and earned that spot, so, any other questions or concerns? The next meeting is November 17th, if you have any agenda items, you can certainly send them to Wendy or I, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara and Georgia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.